MPO meeting, we're delighted to have you join us this morning. Pastor Jim Harp is going to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think I signed up for prayer.
Let's pray. Oh Father, thank you for this day, beautiful day that you've given us here, Lord, this morning. And thank you for your presence, Lord. I was just thinking and reading in your word this morning, and God, it talks about your presence and what it means, Lord, for your presence. And, Lord, there's peace, and there's joy, and there's wisdom. And, Lord, there's just an awareness that, God, you're in charge, and you're in control. And so, Lord, I thank you for that. And the Bible tells us that there's nowhere we can go to hide from your presence, that you're there. And the invocation is not to ask you to be here, but for me, it's just to acknowledge that you're here, God. So I thank you for that this morning. I thank you for these leaders that you have placed in authority over us here in Martin County. And I do pray, God, for wisdom and direction and guidance, and that your thoughts would be their thoughts, and your ways would be their ways as they make decisions for those of us who live here and enjoy this beautiful place, God. So, thank you. Your word says that you put those in leadership for us, and so, God, I thank you for placing them here. Be with them, bless them, bless their families, encourage them, protect them. And I just expand that to everyone who's a part of Martin County leadership, Lord, even those who do some of the things that are behind the scenes that we don't see, Lord. I thank you for them, and I ask your blessing upon them, Father. So we just commit this day, and this meeting especially, into your hands, and I thank you that you're here and that you will guide and direct. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the rule. Commissioner Eileen Vargas is excused. Commissioner Sarah Hurd.
Right here.
Commissioner Stacy Hetherington.
I'm here.
Commissioner Blake Cabs.
Here.
Commissioner Edward Campy is excused. Commissioner Christopher Collins. Commissioner Kaya Mayfield is excused. Mayor Carmine DePaolo.
Here.
Commissioner Sean Reed.
Here.
We have a call.
Excellent. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye, opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor. Aye, opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Are there any members of the public who would like to address us? Seeing none, we will move on to 8A, which is the final draft of the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan.
I want to thank you all for coming to this special meeting today. This is the end of almost two years of hard work on the development of the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan. You all have been hearing about this for almost all of that time, almost every meeting. I think we've had an update. So I will turn it over to Ricardo Vasquez. He's the MPO Principal Planner and the Project Manager on this project. And we have TY Lynn here as well to present this this morning. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ricardo.
Thank you. Chair, if I may request that you open a public hearing for this agenda item, because I believe when we sent out the agenda, we didn't put that on there, but you'll see in front of you a copy that this should be a public hearing, so.
This is a public hearing.
Thank you. With that said, again, I'll share Beth's sentiments. Thank you all for coming here today and attending this special meeting. As Beth mentioned, we started this project back in 2024 in April, so it's been a long way coming. And, you know, here on the agenda page, we showed you all the different steps that we've brought forward to you all throughout this process. So today, we are here at the final, at the finish line, and we are hoping to get final adoption. So with that, I'll introduce Vikas Jane, Project Manager with TY Lynn, to present on this final component.
Thank you, Ricardo. Can I get the?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Really excited to be here. Vikas Jane with TY Lynn, Consultant Project Manager for this, for this project. So we have a short agenda this morning. I'll provide a quick recap of the Long Range Transportation Plan Development Process, recap of the 2050 Cost Feasible Plan that I presented to you all last month, and then we'll talk a little bit about a couple of scenarios that we, that we conducted some analysis on as part of the LRTP process, and then wrap up with next steps.
I'm sorry, can we, can I interrupt you just for a second? Do you gentlemen want to move seats, maybe, if the monitors are working on, in other?
It's unplugged.
Oh, it's just unplugged, okay. I just didn't want them to get too far without them being able to see the presentation.
That was my question.
Okay. Okay.
So this is really the first slide, so to speak. This snapshot of the LRTP development process. We went over this process that last month. It highlights key milestones, technical and public involvement related. As Ricardo mentioned, over the past 18 to 20 months, you all approved, reviewed a number of planned components, and those are shown here. We are at the finish line with the final draft of the LRTP adoption. Recap, here's a Cliff's Note version of the 2050 Draft Cost Feasible Plan. We went over the plan mid-month last month. It shows a gamut of multimodal projects to enhance mobility, safety, accessibility of the transportation system for residents and visitors here in Martin County over the next 20, 25 years. There's a variety of projects here, roadway projects, SIS improvements, turnpike projects, safety improvements. There is transportation system management operations projects, as well as non-motorized improvements, bike bed, greenways, and so on. I'll also mention on this previous slide, the draft plan that you all approved last month, we did not make any changes to that plan. So all those projects that we discussed, those are all in the plan. We went over the slide as well, that shows the total cost of all the projects included in that Cost Feasible Plan. It's about $746 million in year of expenditure dollars. It includes about $45 million of projects that are illustrative, meaning those projects are funded through discretionary funds at FDOT district-wide level. And those programs are mentioned here at the bottom of the slide. The slide also shows that about 69% of these, the funds are going for roadway, highway improvements. There's about 20, about 22% that's allocated for transit improvements, and then the rest is spread over a variety of different modes. So this, we conducted scenario planning exercise, which is something, there's a few reasons why you would want to do this as part of the LRTP process. The three main reasons are state and federal highway administration, they strongly recommend that this be done as part of the process. It's a good, one of the best planning practices. And third, and I believe that's perhaps the most important one, is it provides an analytical framework to you all, the leaders here at the MPO and the MPO staff, to analyze and understand the impacts of transportation investment decisions, policy decisions on different types of modes and scenarios. And I'll walk you through the two scenarios that we looked at as part of the 2050 LRTP process. So we looked at regional connections and smart mobility futures, and I'll walk you through what those scenarios are, what's included in those scenarios. But before I do that, I want to point out that the performance of these two scenarios is evaluated vis-à-vis the 2050 Cost Feasible Plan, meaning the projects that are already included in that plan. And then, as I'll walk you through some of the analysis results, you'll see there's some reference data for how it compares to the existing plus committed networks, which means projects that, the existing network out there, plus the projects that have been funded through construction in the next five years. So that's sort of a given for this exercise. Another point I'd like to make is, all the things that we'll be talking, you know, as part of scenario planning and results and analysis, none of that has an impact on the projects that are included in the Cost Feasible Plan. So that piece stays as-is. So in that sense, you can think of this as an academic sort of exercise. So the regional connections scenario includes five regional transit routes that are shown here, tri-rail extension along FEC corridor, SR 710 CSX connector in that corridor, express bus on turnpike, as well as US 1 Transit enhancements and I-95 Express Bus Route. In addition to those, these regional transit services, we also included the turnpike to I-95 Direct Connect ramps. So these projects are included on top of the 2050 Cost Feasible Plan projects, and of course, the existing plus, the existing highway and transit network. The other scenario we looked at is smart mobility futures, and this is really technology-based scenario, in that FHWA Federal Highway Administration has a number of scenarios, and we picked slow roll, which means modest improvement in levels of penetration, market penetration for AV autonomous vehicles and connected vehicles. And then, in terms of the geographic spread of these technologies and these improvements, they would be, sort of, you can think of those as confined to certain designated areas. We also considered micromobility, microtransit, and mobility as a service component, and all those items were qualitatively assessed, because those improvements cannot be reflected in a meaningful way in the, in the technical tools that we use, which primarily is the regional transit demand model for, for this region, which is TCRPM, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Model. And speaking of the model, the slide here shows various performance measures that we use to do this comparative evaluation.
Yeah, one slide back.
There's a question for you, sorry?
Sure. Real quick. What is mobility as a service?
Great question.
Like an Uber type of?
So, sort of, mobility as a service is a technology-based feature. It is, it basically provides a single user platform, which is, which is a single-user platform for, for users to plan their trips, to pay for their trips across all modes. So for instance, you mentioned Uber. You could think of, of an app where Uber, Marty, if there was shared bike services or any on-demand microtransit service, all those would be available in that one app to the user.
Okay.
And then they could go in, they can go from point A to point B, they can see all the total amount that they would, you know, the cost of those services, and so on and so forth.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure. So this, we looked at a variety of performance measures. As you can see here, majority of the performance measures, and I'll walk you through these, they are, they were tested through the regional planning model, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Model, TCRPM 6. And then we also looked at energy costs, which was an off-model assessment. So this slide in the next shows about six different performance measures. I'll start with the one on the top left, which is vehicle miles traveled. And this was the total demand that is out on the network in Martin County in 2050. So under the regional connections scenario, you see highest demand. It's about 4.5% more than the demand that you would see in the Cost Feasible Plan. For smart mobility futures, it's a little bit less in terms of the magnitude. It's about 3.5% more than the Cost Feasible Plan. You can, the reason can be attributed to import latent demand that's out there. Once you build these ramps and Direct Connect ramps and put all those services out there, you start seeing that demand on the network, and that's why it goes, goes up. In smart mobility futures, there is demand, but the demand is slightly less, and the reason is the shared mobility options that are available. So ride hailing, microtransit, and so forth, that we were talking about. So that magnitude is a little bit less. The top right shows vehicle hours traveled. This is the total, sort of, travel time. You can think about this as travel time for, for all the, all the folks that are out on the network at regional level. So this is all countywide numbers. It is, it's correlated to the demand. So as the demand increases, your VHT, vehicle hours, travel increases. In case of shared mobility, it, it goes down, because there's more available capacity with technology improvements, roadway capacity. And then closely related to that is the congestion speeds, which you see on the bottom-left corner. As more capacity becomes available, you have technology-based improvements, the speeds improve for smart mobility future scenario, and that's why it goes up. In case of regional connections, it goes down. And just a quick note on the Cost Feasible Plan, even with the increase in travel, about 0.9%, just under 1%, you still see improvement in congested speed, which indicates that the projects that are programmed and included in the LRTP, they do make sense. They help improve congestion and speeds and travel times in the county. The bottom-right corner shows average trip length, and that stays the same across all scenarios. And the reason there is we held the land use component that feeds into the model constant. So we are not changing where, in the future, the land use, housing, and those, and those components, and therefore, you see that the average trip length stays constant. The slide here shows daily transit ridership and energy costs. So daily transit ridership, as we would expect, we increased regional transit service and significantly in the regional connections scenario, we added five regional transit routes. So we are really increasing transit service in, from supply standpoint, you know, in terms of service hour, revenue miles, and so on and so forth, three to four times more compared to the 2050 Cost Feasible Plan, and therefore, the ridership goes up significantly. In case of smart mobility futures, you see a decline in transit ridership, and that's, again, goes back to the improvement in travel times, congestion, and, and speeds, and therefore, there's less incentive for folks to shift mode and, and go to transit. Energy cost is directly related to our assumptions of fleet composition, and, and then we did, and I can talk more about the calculations if there's interest here, but regional connections would see the highest energy cost, and smart mobility future just outperforms that scenario as well as it's a little bit, is almost in line with the draft Cost Feasible Plan projects. So those are the analysis findings. In terms of next steps, we are at the tail end of this 20-month process. With the final plan adoption, we'll get into production, and we'll be preparing a series of reports and technical memoranda and turning those in. But with that, I will take questions, comments?
Questions?
Yes, I had one. Can I take you back to page eight? And the, my question is about tri-rail extension. And now that's different than the two trains we have going right now, right? I mean, the, we've got the FAC freight trains, and then we've got the Prospect, the Brightline train. And then the tri-rail extension would be the thing they have down in South Florida, right? Coming up this way?
That's correct.
And that would be from West Palm Beach to Fort Pierce?
It would be from West Palm Beach up to, we don't go all the way into Fort Pierce, but downtown Stewart.
Okay. And is there like an expected timetable on when that would happen? Or?
Yeah, that's, that's been discussed for, for decades, actually, having the tri-rail extend up here. And, and, you know, certain things have happened over the years, several, one of which, several years ago, the legislature changed the statute to stay, to say that it could not happen unless FDOT supported it. And also, there was also a big issue where the transferring the line, the passenger rail line from the, what's the state-owned corridor down south, from Mangonia Park down to Miami, to have the trains switch over to FEC. FEC is a private railroad, they're just within Florida, they don't have to follow a lot of FRA rules. So because of that, they can kind of make their own, or they can be more strict about things, and there was a, there was an issue about making that transition over to the other set of tracks. So are people still discussing it? Yes, or is tri-rail, I mean, studied it over the years? Absolutely. They've done several studies on this to see where they could make that transition. So it's still looked at as in plans and long-range plans, but as far as an actual timetable, I, you know, I wouldn't be able to tell you that. Because they've, they've, like I said, you know, when I worked for tri-rail years ago, we got letters from the city of Stewart, and, you know, asking for a tri-rail extension up there, that they, you know, wanted to include it in their, their comprehensive plan to support passenger rail. And so that's just been on the books for a long time, so no timetable.
I suppose the advantage of it would be that the fees for riding that train are pretty low compared to like Brightline.
Well, also, it's not a breast train. I mean, tri-rail stops, there are several stations along the tri-rail line. It's a commuter rail system, as opposed to Brightline is a high-speed rail, and there are just very few stops between Miami and Orlando. Tri-rail doesn't go all the way up to Orlando, but it, you know, it does have, you know, it stops in West Palm, it stops in Lake Worth, and Deerfield, and Boynton Beach. I mean, at Boca, there's a lot of stops on tri-rail, because it's for commuters. And, but, but Brightline, unless you're going to, you know, the points, you know, where there's a station, there's, there's limited stops. It's faster, it's a high-speed train, but it's just a different kind of rail system.
It's kind of conceptual at this time, and probably something way into the future.
Yeah, that, I understand that tri-rail's having funding issues right now, though, so I don't think they're, they're thinking about just, you know, keeping their, their current operation right now, but if that works out, then I'm sure they'll look at some in the future, you know, still look at this and consider this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, I had, I had a couple of questions, Beth. When I was on the Business Development Board, I remember reading about the Innovation Hub. Does that play a part in here, or?
This is consistent with the Innovation Hub. That's something that the county developed, but that was one of the projects that have, the studies that were reviewed as part of the development of this project, of this document.
And I guess, how do I get brought up to speed on the Innovation Hub? Because we, we vote on things here, but I know it's mainly on the Board of County Commissioners.
Sure. It's on the Innovation Hub study, the report, I believe it's on the county website, but we, we are consistent, like I mentioned, kind of at the last meeting. This document is consistent with the locally adopted plans. I mean, that's one of the requirements for this document. So it's not in, it's, it's consistent with, especially the comp plan is the big one.
Because like, a lot of the capital improvement projects like that I've seen, like specifically Golden Gate, Commerce, that's been discussed for flooding, does all of that correlate with the Innovation Hub? And does that also correlate with downtown Stewart, where Commissioner Collins mentioned it, with the multimodal transportation hub there in downtown? Like, what is the?
Well, I think the Innovation Hub, I think, is a different kind of report than some of the other planning documents that, 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 you know, I mean, that, that's something that the county developed, where obviously, the, when any local government develops a plan, they're going to make it consistent with the locally adopted plans, but it's not, it's not a requirement, if you will, that I know of, unless it's, I guess, written in the scope, where certain plans that the local governments adopt, as well as the Long Range Transportation Plan, have to follow a certain, you know, certain requirements to be able to be adopted and to be able to be in compliance. So I don't really, I'm not as familiar with that report as a whole and the development of that report. You know, that would be, that was something through the Board of County Commissioners, but I believe it is on the, the county website, from what I understand. Like I said, that was one of the reports that were reviews, reviewed as part of this document, as, as well as some of the city planning studies that y'all have done for, you know, the downtown master plan, the, the Triangle District, you know, you all have done planning documents over the years that we also reviewed.
Do they all interconnect, I guess?
I'm sorry?
Do they all interconnect?
Yeah, that would be important. That's the whole reason why you want a good, you know, that's, that, that, that goes to the integrity of this document, because you want to make sure that's all the regional connections are there. That's why they have, this is, this board is multi-jurisdictional, is to make sure there's cohesiveness in the transportation planning.
So in order, like, like if I wanted an update, I guess, on the Innovation Hub, how would that work? Would it, because you have two different boards, actually, three different boards at play?
Sure, I would suggest that you call George Stokus. He's the Assistant County Administrator, and I believe he was the Project Manager on the Innovation Hub. So I would think that he would probably know more about it than anyone else.
Okay. And then I have one more que, well, I'll save that one for the comments at the end. All right, that's it for now.
Mr. Jane, are autonomous long-haul trucks allowed in Florida?
There is some pilot projects that are looking at that, and from what I've read, there are few that are on the street, and the testing facility, I believe, out in Winterhaven is also, and that's FDOT Test Tracks, they are, they are looking at that as well.
And are these driverless?
So there's a different level of autonomy, right? And it goes, I believe, from zero to four. And at this point, I don't believe there is 100% driverless vehicles. There has to be a human behind the steering wheel at all times.
I was driving back from Tallahassee last week and thought I saw a driverless truck.
Maybe it was a really short driver.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to adopt the?
And this is specifically for the 2045 Long Range Plan?
The 2050.
2050, sorry.
Yep.
Yes, Commissioner Reed?
I had one, one more comment. I know Commissioner Collins had touched on it, and I know, I sit on the City Board, and specifically to touch on the Brightline stuff, it's been intended to be privately funded. I know Commissioner Collins brought it up, and I was, I was a little confused at the last meeting on like where the direction comes from, like, because I know it's centrally located in the city limits, I know the county owns it, the county took over the project. How, how would the process work if we, as a City Board, don't support that project unless it was more privately funded? That's my biggest caveat, because in the 2045 Range Plan, the Long Range Plan, it specifically mentioned privately funded, just like the, the bridge being privately funded, and I believe Brightline was supposed to pay for that, and that's totally changed as well with grant money. And I know they're still working on grant money for that, but that's still taxpayer money, is grant money, whether it's local, state, or federal. How would something like that get updated in this Long Range Plan? Like, is it the MPO where the direction comes from? Or is it me sitting on the city, would the city manager have to send a letter? How, how does that work, Beth, for clarification?
Okay, so, so you do touch on a good, a good point, where the Long Range Plan is updated every five years, we go through this process every five years, but it does have an amendment process. So with, in that five years, if there's a time where you all want to do an amendment, that's possible. Can you do the overhead?
Yes.
So, like I said, in order to be in compliance, the, this document has to be consistent with locally required plans, in particular, the comp plan. So, so there is a, I've mentioned this, is it? So, so, there is, I've mentioned this, is it, is it working? Oh, there, okay, can you make it smaller there? Okay, this is a slide from, I've mentioned the MPOAC Institute to you, that's the statewide MPO, where they have training for MPO members. Commissioner Heatherington has been to that. Actually, Commissioner Vargas went to a recent one as well, and this is a slide from one a long time ago. I'm sure they've updated their slides, it's just a lot prettier than they are now. But this one was, but, but the, the concept obviously is the same, where, do you have the?
You had to point with your finger on the camera.
Oh, there, okay. So, here's the comp plan, and that needs to be consistent with the local government's, or here's the Long Range Transportation Plan, and that needs to be consistent with the local government's comp plan by law. They need to be consistent with each other. The LRTP feeds into the priority, project priority process, so when you all go over your priorities, like when you talk about State, State Road 17 being your number-one priority, that was because it was originally in the Long Range Plan, and then it feeds into that priority list. And then, when those projects get funded, it, they need to, they're, they're included in the five-year FDOT Work Program, that's a state document, and the MPO's Transportation Improvement Program, that's a federal required document. Obviously, you know, the, the local government CIP, that needs to be consistent with the comp plan as well. So, by law, in order for, for us to get funding from the federal and state governments, this document needs to be in compliance, and that's how they're in compliance. Right now, the, the local, the city of Stewart's comp plan, I had wording in here for that.
Yeah, no, I know it mentioned, this, this slide actually helps a lot, by the way.
Oh, good, yeah, yeah, it's a good illustration of, of kind of the concept, the theory, if you will, of how these plans need to be consistent. So, right now, the city of Stewart's comp plan, the intergovernmental section of the transportation element states the city shall continue to encourage expansion of Tri-Rail, passenger rail service, bus service, and other multimodal forms of transportation, with a particular emphasis on developing downtown, and developing downtown Stewart as a transportation hub. So, right now, the LRTP is consistent with the Brightline Station with that statement. If the city wants to change their comp plan, that's something that the city will do, and, and like I said at the last meeting, if the city has any issues about, you know, safety or the transportation network, you know, you can always write the, write the MPO letter that's to the chair, and you all can bring it up and discuss it at this meeting, because this, this forum, if you will, was put into place, you know, so there could be that regional coordination, regional connection of the transportation network. So, so yes, you're right, where it starts at the, the local government level, where those decisions are made by, would be from the City of Stewart Commission, and then they would inform the MPO, and then you all can discuss it at this level. We have at our next meeting, October 27th, like I said, I really appreciate you all coming here today to talk about the Long Range Transportation Plan, because with the adoption of this plan, we are in compliance and are eligible to receive federal and state funding. The District Secretary, Steve Braun, will be here, is scheduled to be here on October 27th, and I think he has some really good news about State Road 710, and it's a lot of money, and to be able to receive that money, to be eligible for that money, this document needs to be approved, so it needs to be right, it needs to be consistent. But like I said, you know, for the next five years, until we do another one, if there's a change by a local government or by the comprehensive plan, you know, there's an amendment process. They, the federal government does that purposely, because they understand that environments change, you know, priorities change, so you all can let, let us know, you know, can send a letter to the chair or to me, and that we can make it an agenda item, so you all can discuss it at this regional forum.
Okay, so it's, it's decided here, and if, and if, and if we're talking about it's being compliant with the comp plan, Martin County's comp plan in Section 1.2 states, protect taxpayers by requiring conservative and prudent fiscal management and a financially feasible CGMP, which ensures and requires that development pay for itself, rather being subsidized by taxpayers, which is what we're doing here. So, I understand it's in the city's comp plan, but when you clearly look at Martin County's, development should pay for itself and not be subsidized by taxpayers, and it clearly says it here.
Sure. The, the county did, as I mentioned at the last meeting, they did submit a grant for the Brightline Station, that was a decision by the B OCC, so, so I guess, you know, that, that may, that's a good indication that it's, there is a change in philosophy, a change in, in what they wanted to do. It is very compliant, however, with the transportation element, goal 5.5 of their comp plan, where it talks about to establish transit within Martin County to connect to nearby regional hubs, such as Port St. Lucie in Palm Beach County and points, ports beyond, points beyond. The county shall establish transit corridors and transit neighborhood centers that provide for specific design features to encourage and support the use of transit. And, and that's just one of several.
No, I understand, and, and that's where, you know, we could always go back and forth, and I respect what you do, by the way, and I respect every board member up here, but it's not compliant with everything in Martin County's comp plan, and it clearly states it, but that's, that's.
Well, we work, at the MPO, we work with the consultants, we work, and thank you very much, Vargas has been just a champion this whole time, has been very helpful, where we make sure that this is, this is, follows the requirements in order to get the, to get funding for Martin County projects. And like I said, there's very good news coming at the end of the month, Martin County to receive the funding for the widening of 710 is, that's a, that's, that's incredible how, what a great partner FDOT has been in the, making that happen, but the reason why they were able to help us with that is because we need to make sure our documents are in compliance.
No, I understand, this was just Brightline in particular, and that's where I don't think it's in compliant with Martin County's comp plan, as a board member, but that's all I have to say on it.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to approve the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan?
Sorry to interrupt, Commissioner, or Chair, we, if we could do a roll call vote for this adoption?
Okay, and also, is there any public comment? Seeing none? Okay.
Commissioner Sarah Hurd?
Approve.
Commissioner Stacy Heatherington?
Approve.
Commissioner Jay Blake-Caps?
Approve.
Mayor Carmine DePaulo?
Approve.
Commissioner Sean Reed?
No.
That motion passes. Now, do we have any comments from FDOT? Thank you, Mr. Jane.
Like I said, they will be here at the end of the month, on October 27th is the next MPO Board meeting, and the, Steve Braun, the District Secretary, will be here, and like I said, they have some good news for us for, about State Road 710.
Comments from committee members, comments from board members, anything else? We are adjourned.
I have one.
Okay.
What does a complete streetscape project entail?
That, do you go ahead?
It's a loaded streetscape? So, like, we, we've, we've had streetscapes come through, like, the city of Stewart, and I've seen them in Martin County, and, and what is a complete streetscape? Is that roads, infrastructure?
A complete street project in general is just how do we make a roadway or a corridor more friendly to all modes of transportation, where it, historically speaking, the emphasis has been on moving cars, and the pedestrians and bicyclists has kind of been a forethought. Now, it's, you know, how do we encourage people to, to walk more, how do we encourage them to bike more, how do we make those facilities safer for them? So, there's different treatments and different opportunities that you can do to improve those situations on those roadways, but specifically, complete streets is how do we make the street work for everyone in all modes?
That makes sense.
In general.
Was Map Road a complete streetscape project?
Map Road would be considered a complete street project.
And the only reason I, I bring that project up is for anyone that's gone to, like, Lenoras or any of the businesses down that corridor, it's very unsafe coming out of there with a, a vehicle, because you can't see. So, I think as a board member sitting up here, it's something we should look at for safety concerns, because I see a lot of complete streetscapes, and with the on-street parking and the trees, it's, it's a total blind spot, and in my personal opinion, it's unsafe, and it's going to cause an accident in the long run. And then I had one more. I know I had mentioned it at one of them, one of the MPO Board meetings, it was for, is it Fisher's Cove on Caner? That, that development on the east side?
I'm not familiar.
I believe, there's a development over there by the fire station, and I was told it was Stacy Heatherington's district, where I had mentioned.
It's a tap project.
Yeah, where, where we would have, like, homeowners that would have non-conforming because they wouldn't be able to park their vehicles with the land development code, and I don't know if that's where the Martin County Board picks it up, and if they ever talked about it, or if there was an update, but I remember you were out, Stacy, when I had mentioned that, and, and I guess the way I look at it is, I know it's going to be county-wide at one point, and it's something that should still be looked at and considered, because you're going to have homeowners that are out of the land development code, because they're going to block the sidewalk, and then you have to be concerned with safety once again, or even code enforcement coming out, and I see it a lot in Port St. Lucie in particular, where they enforce that, because you can't park more than one vehicle then in the driveway, otherwise, you're going to block the sidewalk. So, I just wanted to mention that again as well.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Just a brief overview, that is a resident-driven project. We did get, we discussed it here, we discussed it at the Board, I believe it's a tap, tap grant-funded project, but that was a resident safety concern project. I understand what you're saying, we're still in design for who's going, how the driveways are going to fix, but that was requested by the residents for the safety of the residents.
And, and Commissioner Reed, you're absolutely right about the Lenoras.
Yeah.
It is impossible to see in either, in either direction. You would think you would be safe going out of that, that mall, turning, right, you're not.
I don't feel safe.
No, it's not, it's terrible.
And there, there's other projects in the county, like Golden Gate, for example. I mean, someone could be standing by the pedestrian crosswalk, and you might not necessarily see them, it's, I don't know.
But at least there are pedestrian crosswalks, so if you're a careful driver like I am, you drive through it every day, you, you're looking for pedestrians at every crosswalk, crosswalk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We are adjourned.